Good evening, and welcome to the April 27, 2015, meeting of the Florissant City Council. Before we begin, if anyone would like to make a comment at the Hearing from Citizens section of the meeting, I would ask that you fill out a yellow speaker card located on the table next to the entrance of the chamber. If you'll hand that to our attorney, Mr. Hessel, he'll pass it down the line. Item number one, Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please join the council in standing and reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution and the Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty, justice, and for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Lee?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Egan?
Here.
Caputa? Absent. Shildroff?
Here.
Hanky?
Here.
Pagano? Schmidt?
Let the record reflect that a quorum is present and that Mr. Caputa is excused for business. Item number three, approval of the minutes. Mr. Schmidt makes a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the April 13, 2015 meeting. That motion is seconded by Mr. Lee. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Let the record reflect that the minutes were approved. Item number four, swearing-in of newly-elected officials. And we'll begin with his honor and the mayor.
Fortunately, we have Council President Egan pointed out that perhaps it would be best to swear in the judge, then he could swear in the council. And myself. Please raise your right hand. Do you state your name?
I am Boil.
Solemnly swear that you possess all the qualifications for your position as municipal judge as prescribed by the Charter of the City of Florissant, that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and of the State of Missouri and the Charter and ordinances of the City of Florissant, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of your office. Congratulations.
Now I get to return the paper. So, Mayor, raise your right hand. Do you, Thomas P. Schneider, solemnly swear that you possess all qualifications for your position as mayor as prescribed by the Charter of the City of Florissant, that you will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States and of the State of Missouri and the Charter and ordinances of the City of Florissant, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of your office? I do.
All right, if we can now have the five of the members of the council being sworn in, go to the same area.
We're doing this as a group, so if you all raise your hands. Do you state your names, please? Solemnly swear that you possess all the qualifications for your position as councilperson as prescribed by the Charter of the City of Florissant, that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the State of Missouri and the Charter and ordinances of the City of Florissant, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of your office. Congratulations.
Item number four, Hearing from Citizens. If you would like to make a statement, now is the time to do so. I would ask that you pick up a speaker's card located on the table next to the entrance of the chambers, and once again pass along to Mr. Hessel. Mr. Manginelli, if you'll state your name and your address for the record, I'd be appreciative and welcome.
Paul Manginelli, 1600 Estes. I saw it coming in late and it was the first. I'll make it quick, and I know probably some of you will speak about this at the end, but I just wanted to, we had the food truck, the Food Truck Nights at the Knights of Columbus Grounds last week. It was a great success.
I'm sorry, excuse me, Paul. We're on here. Mr. Manginelli, if you could speak up, perhaps?
Hold the mic.
Hold the mic, Paul.
All right. I just want to, real quick, thank the city again for...
You're at forty-three seconds, Mr. Manginelli. You might have to hurry up a little bit.
All righty. Better? Okay. Just, again, want to thank the city for their cosponsorship with the Food Truck Nights. Food Truck event, it was a great success, again, but the support of the employees that came out from the Parks Department, the Street Department, and everything really made it a great event, having the bandshell there, getting all the extra tables and chairs. But, you know, more so, just the employees were just, just great representatives of this city, and we really appreciate it. And then, again, we had a food drive for team, and the last event last year, we filled up like half a trunk in a small car. This year, took a F-150 pickup bed full of food to team. So, again, I just want to thank the city and especially the employees that helped out. They were great representatives of this, of this city. Thanks.
Don Adams. Mr. Adams, if you'd be so kind as to state your name and address for the record. Again, if you'll actually hold the microphone and speak loudly into it to help us out.
My name is Don Adams. I live at 240 Franciscus Drive. I'd like to thank the mayor and ladies and gentlemen of the council for letting me address them tonight. I'm not used to having a councilman who responds to my calls immediately and then gets back with me with the results. I want to thank Tim Jones for that. My concerns are, briefly, the issue of grass. We have a policy, I believe, in Florissant that we allow the grass to be eight inches tall before we can call City Hall, and the problem with that is by the time it gets eight inches tall and we call you guys, you guys get out there, you get the notice in the mail, they get it back, the grass is ten inches tall. Maybe we could address lowering the height of the grass down to four or six inches is something that might want to be considered. I discussed this with Lou briefly at the Town Hall meeting up at Coke Park last fall, and he was open to the idea. The other thing is the trashcans. People are now leaving their trashcans in front of their garages alongside, out by the streets. They're not putting them where they're supposed to be, and it's making the city look rather poor, to put it bluntly. And I think, I've been a resident of Florissant since 1974, and I don't like these changes, and I think we could address these. It's my understanding from councilmen that we now have a second police officer working with the code enforcers, so maybe something can be done about this. As much as I hate to say it, it's a good way to raise, generate money for the City of Florissant with a $10 ticket. If they don't want to do it, give them a $10 ticket. The other issue is kids walking down the street, the middle of the streets, and they don't want to get out of your way when you're driving. Chief Lowery has got better things to do than be called about kids walking down the middle of the street. I don't know what can be done about it. Maybe yous can discuss it and come up with some ideas. And the last issue is these kids with the saggy pants. I understand they're proud that they're no longer in diapers, that they're all adults and they got big-boy pants on now, but I don't want to see them. I don't need to see them. I have rights, just like they do. I don't need to see these. If something could be done about this, I would appreciate it. Thank you all very much. And, Tim, you're doing a great job.
Thank you, Mr. Adams, for your comments. Seeing none, we will go on to item number seven, Public Hearings. Public hearing 15-04-008.
In accordance with Section 405-310 of the Florissant zoning code, a public hearing will be held by the City Council of Florissant, Missouri, in the council chambers at 9:55 Rue St. Francois on Monday, April 13th, 2015, at 7:30 p.m. on the following proposition: To authorize a special use permit to Sunrise Restaurants LLC (DBA Denny's Restaurant) to allow for the existing sit-down, carry-out restaurant with exterior renovations for the property located at 2925 North Highway 67. Citizens will have an opportunity to be heard. Anyone with special needs should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling 839-7630 or TDD 839-5142.
Is the petitioner, Mr. Brian Lamar, present?
They said they have somebody here.
Is Mr. Lamar, one of his representatives, present?
From Denny's?
From Denny's. Not seeing anyone. I will move that this...
Email today.
I will move that we postpone this meeting, but however prior to doing so, I will make it available, anyone who is in the audience that would like to comment on this proposal, now is the time to do so. Seeing none, I will make a motion that this meeting, this public hearing is continued until 5:11:15. That is seconded by Ms. Pagano. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And the meeting will be continued, or the hearing will be continued. Number two, Public Hearing 15-04-009.
In accordance with Section 405-310 of the Florissant zoning code, a public hearing will be held by the City Council of Florissant, Missouri, in the council chambers at 9:55 Rue St. Francois on Monday, April 27, 2015, at 7:30 p.m. on the following proposition: To authorize a special use permit to Johnny Landoff Chevrolet to allow for an auto repair facility for the property located at 4580 Washington. Citizens will have an opportunity to be heard. Anyone with special needs should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing. We're calling 839-7630 or TDD 839-5142.
Is the petitioner, Mr. Larry Walker, present? Good evening, Mr. Walker. If you will approach the podium, state your name and your address for the record, and again, like I've told everyone, if you'll either pick it up in your hand or talk very loud into it, it'd be appreciated.
Good evening. My name is Larry Walker, Baxington, Missouri, 221 Pointless Boulevard, St. Charles, Missouri, 63304. I'm here tonight representing Johnny Landoff Chevrolet for petition for you. Project or the site is located at 48... Sorry, 4580 Washington Street.
Excuse me, sir.
Yes.
I think we're having some more technical difficulties. Could you really talk loud into that for me?
Okay. I'll hold it up real close. Okay, the property, property in question is 4580 Washington Street. The parcel's approximately .4 acres, .4 acres in size. The existing structure on the site is, I do believe it's an existing insurance agency. There is a curb cut to the existing property, an existing structure. I think it's an old, it's an old residence. There's a small parking field in the front of the building, and there's a small parking field, field in the rear of the building. The parcel itself sits directly behind the existing dealership. This is the existing building right here, the existing Chevrolet dealership and the residence I was referring to is, is right there. What we're proposing with this project is the removal of the existing structure and the two parking fields that I mentioned previously. And what we are proposing is a standalone structure, as you'll see in brown on this, on this particular image. Proposed, proposed building in this area, directly behind the existing dealership. The building itself is approximately 4,247 square foot. Purpose of the building, or the majority of the purpose is there'll be six new service bays in the building. The service bays themselves will be at the same grade as the existing dealership, which is lower than if you're standing up on Washington Street. There, it'll be below that, that elevation by, depending on where you're at, at the building, about 10 to 15 feet. The remainder, again, the green area is what's depicted as being grass. The old structure and the old parking will be removed. The proposed structure that we're proposing with the six new service bays is, again, for the service bays, it will be below grade. What you'll see from, say, the upper portion of Washington Street is just a small section of the building. You'll see approximately two foot on the western end and about seven foot on the eastern end. Those sides of the upper level, I'll call it, are proposed to be an off-white brick. And what we are requesting for, for, as approval as part of this petition, is that the, the lower portion of the building with the, with the service bays that face the existing dealership down in that area, that's only visible from that area, would be allowed to be the same color, roughly the same color, as, as best as they could match, but a split-face CMU. So, that's a pretty, pretty simple project and site with just that structure. There will be an asphalt connection down lower between the two facilities to where you come out of the new building and out across the way you access the rear of the existing building. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Ms. Pagano.
Hi. I talked to Mr. Landoff last week about this. The curb cut is going to stay on Washington Street? You're going to have the entrance in there?
Well, what we, what we were proposing is that the curb cut stays, but we would remove it back to about where those, approximately where those, that large, those large trees are.
And the two trees are stay?
Correct. We're doing, that, that is what's proposed. The two, I think they're 48-inch trees are, are to remain along the, the frontage there. And then, what I didn't mention is there is landscaping, foundation, plantings for the, for the new building.
Okay.
And there is a fence around the new building also because, mainly because when you get, go to the west, it would be very easy for somebody to just walk right up and actually, with little effort, get up on the building. So, we were looking, need the fence for some protection for that.
Okay.
But the trees would remain, that is the goal of this project, yeah.
And that's going to be a grassy area. It's not going to be...
Correct.
Asphalted.
Correct.
So, there will be no parking, no new cars out there.
Correct.
Right?
Right.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you. On the building itself, HVAC equipment, is there a parapet where it'll be down inside?
No.
Will not be visible from Washington with the lower building?
It will not, but my understanding is there are no actual AC units. It won't be air conditioning.
So, you're just going to do head?
Sorry, air conditioning.
Just do heat inside the building, then?
Correct.
Okay. So, it'll just be...
Right. So, no, so no parapet, no, no, no units on the roof and none down below either.
Air compressor, I'm sure this will be, have its own independent air compressor that'll be inside and...
Correct. That was, I, I did see on the architectural plans, I'm, I'm the civil engineer, but that they had a separate room for the air compressor within the building there. Correct.
The, the hours of operation that they'll be running the service bays, what will those be?
Oh, my gosh. Hmm. Well, I know they're not planning on changing their hours of operation. I, gosh, I just, I just do not have those at my fingertips. I apologize.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you'd please, I work at dealership...
If, if you'll, if you'll approach the podium, please. And, sir, if you'll state your name and address for the record as well.
Bruce Weiner, 2057 Windmill Summit, Imperial, Missouri, 63052.
Thank you. Again, I was asking not only the, the time of operation, but the days of the week that it'll be operating?
It'll be open Monday through Friday from 7:00 in the morning until 6:00 in the evening, and then Saturday from 7:00 in the morning till 12 o'clock noon.
So, all the mechanical...
Same hours that we're running the existing operation now.
So, by dinnertime, it'll all be shut down?
Yes, sir.
And, and the fence that you're proposing, how, how tall is that fence going to be?
Five foot.
Five foot?
Five foot.
Is, is that a wooden fence or a...
A chain-link fence.
A chain-link fence? Mr. Schmidt, you have additional comments?
I have another question. The six bays are back there. They're, they're going to be just regular, full-service, normal service bays, nothing specially back there or...
Correct.
So, just like any other bay inside, you're...
Yes, sir.
You'll do same normal, what, maintenance you did. Inside the building, these six bays will be used far as well?
Actually, the, the new building is going to be, we have right now, we've got a combination of regular repair shops, work. We've got a used car technicians. We do what's called PDIs, pre-delivery inspections. The new facility is going to be for used car repairs and for the pre-delivery inspections.
Okay.
So, I mean, same, same...
Right. Same mechanical work, but, okay. Thanks, that's all I wanted.
One last question for me. Will there be any painting that's done in this?
No, sir.
In this, in this proposal? Any painting of the cars?
Oh, no. No, sir. No paintwork at all.
Your honor?
Is it true that your employer owns this existing building and lot?
Actually, he did, until we purchased this property here, and I think we may have a little bit of outstanding at this point, but, yes.
Are you kidding me?
All right, thank you. And not seeing any other lights on the council, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment on this public hearing? Seeing none, Mr. ... Excuse me? Seeing none, Mr. Shildroff moves to close this public hearing, and is seconded by Mr. Jones. All in favor? Aye. Phew. All right. Very good. Let's move on.
In accordance with Section 405-310 of the Florissant zoning code, a public hearing will be held by the City Council of Florissant, Missouri, in the council chambers at 9:55 Rue St. Francois on Monday, April 27, 2015, at 7:30 p.m. on the following proposition: To authorize an amendment to special use permit 7871 to New York Grill Corporation (DBA New York Grill) to allow for the renovations for, for the property located at 41 Flower Valley Shopping Center. Citizens will have an opportunity to be heard. Anyone with special needs should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling 839-7630 or TDD 839-5142.
Is the petitioner, Mr. Yakub, present? Good evening, welcome, sir. If you could state your name, and I apologize, I mispronounced it. State your name and address for the record, please. And again, you're going to have to talk real loud into that, please.
Mohammed Yakub, 360 Molea Drive, Florissant, Missouri, 63031.
Very good. If you'll tell us about your proposal, sir?
We have the restaurant here, and we rent the second section here, next to it. Would it try just to make this area storage?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, sir.
We have the restaurant here. We're already on business, but we rent another section next to it. Just would it try to make a storage area here? And that's all. We open the wall in the another, in the front here, just to make space for the customer to have like space when carry out, somebody waiting for the order, just to have space for them here.
So, you're simply just taking over adjoining space next years and...
Yeah.
And if I understand, you're going to have room proceeding and storage.
Just to keep it, to keep the storage organized, to keep the storage organized here in this area here.
Are you going to be changing your business hours at all?
No.
And, and what are your business hours right now?
10 to 12 o'clock.
12:00 midnight, right?
12:00 a.m.
12:00 a.m., okay. Thank you. Not seeing any other lights on the dais. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment on this public hearing? Seeing none, Mr. Siam moves to close the public hearing, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Old Business, Second Readings. Bill number 9085. Mr. Jones makes a motion for a second reading. That is seconded by Mr. Lee. Any discussion? All in favor? Clerk, please read the bill a second time.
Ordinance authorizing an amendment to B5 Ordinance Number 8116 to allow for an electronic ground sign for the property located at 475 North Highway 67.
Mr. Jones makes a motion for a third reading. That is seconded by Mr. Hanky. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Clerk, please read the bill for a third time.
Ordinance authorizing an amendment to B5 Ordinance Number 8116 to allow for the, for an electronic sign for the property located at 475 North Highway 67.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this bill, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none. Clerk, please poll the council.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Who is the absent? Shildroff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Siam?
Yes.
Bill number 9885 passes and becomes Ordinance 8134, 8134. Bill 9088, I will make a motion for a second reading on 9088, and that is seconded by Mr. Shildroff. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Please read the bill for the second time.
Ordinance authorizing a reduction of the budgeted amount for the property revi... for the property revitalization fund, account number 1050, Professional Services, in the amount of $36,441.
Mr. Jones makes a motion for a third reading, that is seconded by Mr. Hanke. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Clerk, please read the bill for a third time.
Ordinance authorizing reduction of the budgeted amount for the property revitalization fund, account number 1050, Professional Services, in the amount of $36,441.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this bill, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Hanke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Bill 9088 passes and becomes ordinance 8135, 8135. New Business, Board Appointments. Your honor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to appoint Kyle Mole to the Emergency Management Commission.
Mr. Sayam makes that motion, seconded by Mr. Lee, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Any appointment carries?
Any more, sir?
Resolutions. Resolution 978.
A resolution of the Florissant City Council supporting Senate Bill 540, the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission's 2+2+2 indexing initiative.
Mr. Schmidt makes a motion for a second reading of this resolution, that is seconded by Mr. Shildroff. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Madam Clerk, read the bill, or the resolution a second time, please.
A resolution of the Florissant City Council supporting Senate Bill 540, the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission's 2+2+2+indexing initiative.
Mr. Hanke makes a motion for a third reading of this resolution, that is seconded by Ms. Pagano. Is there any discussion? All in favor, a roll call vote, please.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Hanke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Clerk, please read the bill for the third time.
A resolution of the Florissant City Council supporting Senate Bill 540, the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission's 2+2+2+indexing initiative.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? I'm going to start with Mr. O'Donnell. Mr. O'Donnell, if you'll be so kind as to state your name and your address, and please speak into the mic.
Good evening, my name is Captain O'Donnell, my 12th branch of the line. My question is, I want to know if the city council and the mayor?
And the future mayors, thank you. I'd like to know if the mayor and the council are going to make sure that we get some kind of repairs in the I-270 North Corridor. It's been 50, about 55 years, or 54 years, since we've had any major construction on that interstate, in that section, especially going through Florissant. The section of the bridge on the overpass at Florissant Road and I-270 has got a catchpan underneath it. A catchpan, if you don't know what that is, it's a steel, it's like a steel plate that catches chunks of concrete that are falling from the bridge, that has been falling from the bridge for at least the last five years. And I was wondering, we're not getting anything done with that bridge. If you look at the side of the bridge, there's cracks in the structure of the bridge on the northern side of I-270. And I want to know what kind of guarantee, can you, as a council and this mayor, guarantee us, the residents of Florissant, that we will, in fact, have some of that money that is going to Chesterfield, Wildwood, St. Charles County, South County, I-44, and 270? I want to make sure that we start getting some of the money, because I am not for any kind of taxing of any transportation taxes at all. And if you can guarantee me that this will start, if this passes, that we will start seeing improvements in our northern, in the north I-270 corridor, then I would support it. Otherwise, do you have any kind of response for me? Or am I just whistling out the wind? Oh, this isn't a question and answer session, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to make comment on this? Your honor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I can guarantee, Mr. O'Donnell, one thing, that if this doesn't pass, we will not get any money to fix that bridge. We had a press conference at that bridge on Friday. We had several council members here, I was happy to see Councilman Lee, Jones, Pagano, and Caputa at the press conference, as well as many mayors from other cities, including as far away as Crestwood. And we had County Councilman Michael Mara, a number of people from the Florissant Valley Chamber and North County Incorporated. We had a study was performed, started by MoDOT on the 270 corridor. They are almost finished with that study, all but the very finishing touches to it, and that study has come to a halt, because the rationale is that if we're not going to have any money for highways in the future, why bother? I'm a member of East-West Gateway, I represent St. Louis County Municipal League on that board. I asked the board at the last meeting to take an unprecedented step into passing a resolution in favor of Senate Bill 540, which was a 2+2+2 plan, which has since been whittled down to just the 2 cent plan. And what this will do is, this will save the $230 million of federal matching dollars that the state will receive in 2017. And so, the purpose of the news conference last Friday was to let the legislature know that we are shouting in their ear, asking them to do something, and to put the state above their party, and to put the state above their dogma. And that's the only way that we feel that we can get some attention to them. Now, I'm hoping that St. Charles County will have their own news conference. Perhaps they could have one at the birthplace of the interstate highway system near Blanchett Bridge. There's a lot of other appropriate locations. The reason I chose the location that I did is because the backdrop was the Florissant Road, the 270 overpass over Florissant Road, which was previously mentioned, has nets underneath it to keep the concrete chunks from falling on cars. That bridge, if we don't get this 2 cents of gas tax passed by the legislature, and we lose all the federal matching money, all the state is going to be able to do, the MoDOT is going to be able to do, is patch potholes, in the whole state. Now, this 2 cents will not do anything about the Highway 70 issue between St. Louis and Kansas City. This just allows us to capture the $230 million of federal money in 2017. We've had a steady decrease in the amount of money spent on highways and bridges in this state, and we have to get the legislature to put the state first. I appreciate the city council passing this resolution. Similar resolutions are being passed throughout the county and the state. We have a new organization of mayors called Mayors Cubed. It's the Metro Mayors of Missouri, which are the mayors of 10,000 and larger in St. Louis County, the rest of the state has different parameters. One of the first things that I hope that that organization adopts is a resolution similar to what you're doing tonight.
Seeing other lights on, clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Hanke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that Resolution 978 has been passed by this council. Bills for first reading, 9086. Mr. Schmidt makes a motion to remove Bill 9086 from the agenda, since we did not have the public hearing, as the petitioner did not show for a second time, and that is seconded by Mr. Shildroff. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the item will be removed from the agenda. Bill 9091.
Request to authorize a special use permit for Johnny Landoff Chevrolet to allow for an auto repair facility for the property located at 4580 Washington.
Bill 9092.
Request to amend special use permit number 7871 for New York Grill Corporation, DBA New York Grill, to allow for the renovations of property located at 41 Flower Valley Shopping Center.
Item number 10, Council Announcements. Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Egan. Mayor and I had an opportunity to attend the Chamber of Commerce's event last week, and Greater Saint, the Greater North County Chamber of Commerce is celebrating its 60th year, representing Florissant and the North County region. And part of the evening was spent recognizing Mr. John Artwig as the Business Person of the Year, well-deserved honor. And also, the city of Florissant was recognized for 44 years of service, membership with the chamber. So that was a, that was a really good event. I appreciate the support the city gives to the chamber, I think it benefits all of us. Also, I wanted to take a quick plug for the chamber's going to have their annual golf tournament on Friday, June the 5th. City council is going to be sponsoring a hole, and there is going to be a mayor's challenge again this year, and so, our mayor has to defend that title again. So I'm looking forward to a foursome out there to work with him. Last, I just wanted to make a comment, the gentleman brought up about the grass, and I've been dealing with people in my ward about the grass, and I just want to kind of make people aware that, in the spring, this becomes a big problem. And we are required, once the grass is in violation, to send what we'll call a 10-day notice, and say they have 10 days to come into compliance. If they don't come into compliance, the city can and will go in and cut the grass, and will send the homeowner a bill. If they don't pay that bill, it goes on their property taxes as a special tax bill. However, want to also make you aware that several years ago, we passed an ordinance that said, once we've notified a resident of the violation, if that grass gets beyond that in the same growing season, we can go right back in and cut the grass again without having to go through that 10-day process. So, this happens all the time, and I'll say all the time, it happens a lot in the spring, and it tends to get better as we go along. However, last year, and I don't recall the number, but it was a staggering number of homes that the city was cutting the grass. And when you get weather involved and the city having to do it, we sometimes get behind in that as well. But it's, the bill that we send the people when we cut their grass, by the time we tack on administrative fees, it's well over $100. So, we get their attention very quickly, it just, in the spring, it's very bad. So, hopefully, we're going to see in the next few weeks that it'll get a little better, and we'll get on top of it and try to keep them cut. The Health Department will create a regular list of problem properties, and then they go by and inspect them, and it's on the list for the whole year. So, hopefully, we can get on top of that, and I agree with you, it looks terrible, so. That's all I have.
Mr. Hanke.
Yes, thank you, President. Everyone knows this weekend is the Valley of Flowers Festival. A lot of the activities that happen with the Valley of Flowers Festival happen in Ward 6. So I'm going to ask a special favor to a lot of the residents of Ward 6. It's going to be a beautiful week this week. We've got people coming in from all over the St. Lucer area, the community, the region, family, friends coming in for this festival. Let's maybe make a little special effort this week to cut that grass, and trim those bushes, and maybe a little painting. Let's put our best face forward for the community we live in, for the outsiders that are going to come visiting us. That's what I'm asking of you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanke. Mr. Jones?
Well, I've got a couple of things here. I'd like to thank Don for coming up. Ward 2 residents are always welcome up here. It's always nice to get feedback in front of the whole council, not just always by myself. I want to congratulate the guys that got sworn in tonight. It's good to see a good team, working in the same direction. I want to remind everybody, every once in a while, if you guys could just stop a little bit out of your time, and take a canned good or two down the team at the end of the street. We're very fortunate what we got, you guys, we need to give to other people that ain't so fortunate. My MSD project, cleaning up the creeks in Ward 2, I worked very, very hard. Met with MSD three to four times. Went down to my union hall to see if they knew some connections down there, and then also stepped in the mayor's office. And I want to thank the administration for reaching out to me, and Tom, the mayor, for helping me get them creeks cleaned up. It's been a long time coming, you guys, I've got plenty of phone calls, and I want to share that thanks from them people, just not to myself, but to this administration, to city workers, and the mayor. I also want to let everybody know it's starting to get warm outside. Don't forget to water your dogs when you put your dogs out, guys, because I am a dog lover, and we need not forget about the animals. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Shildroff?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to thank our fantastic police department for the recent arrests of three individuals that were responsible for several burglaries in Florissant, several which were in Ward 5. These individuals were arrested after a citizen called the police. Folks, if you see something going on in your neighborhood that doesn't look right, please pick up the phone and call the police. It led to the arrest of these three individuals, and I want to thank the citizen who called, and I want to thank our great police department. I would like to thank St. Mark's Church for inviting Ms. Pagano, the chief, and the mayor, and myself to serve as judges in the chili cook-off. We had a really good time. I'm asking for patience again for everybody who drives on Graham Road in St. Ferdinand. The MSD project is about two weeks away from being complete, weather providing. And I think last week, when I drove by there on Wednesday, there was, let's see, Amren was there, MSD was there, and the Klee guest was there. They were just missing charter, and it was very American water, and they would have had a nice party. But they are progressing, and please be patient, and I appreciate your patience with this project. I think a couple of my comrades talked about grass, and I will echo that. I know people like to cut their grass. I'm going to ask you to mulch it or bag it, please do not cut it into the street. You can be given a citation for that. And for the folks who do cut it into the street, it ends up in our sewer, and our sewers get clogged, and then we get called about standing water in our intersections. So please think about that before you cut your grass. Finally, I would like to thank my family and all my supporters in this late election. I really owe a lot to former Judge Tim Kelly, who suggested that I run for city council in 2003. It was some of the best advice I have ever taken, and I can honestly say I've enjoyed every minute of it since I was elected in 2005. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shildroff. To that, I would add two things. Number one, I want to thank the Knights of Columbus for hosting the food truck nights, and Paul Manganielli for putting it together. It was a very windy and cold evening, but it was a tremendous turnout. I believe we had 14 food trucks from a variety of restaurants that were there. It was truly a lot of fun. I got there at 4:30, and the parking lot was already filled. And I know we have another one coming up in the summer, and I'm sure that'll be even more packed. Secondly, I saw on the WWW today that Florissant was named one of the most beautiful cities in the state of Missouri. I think we finished right behind Branson, and I disagree with that, because I think we're every bit of beautiful as Branson, if not more so. And I know that we have the upcoming home contest that our Citizens Participation Committee runs every year, and I know that's a favorite of mine, and I know the other people on the council and the mayor enjoy that as well. So that's a good idea for you now to start planning your entries for that, and as Mr. Hanke and Mr. Shildroff alluded to, it's a good time to spruce up the exterior household. So I have, your honor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to reach out and thank my wife, Rachel, who's here tonight, and all my supporters, the many of them here in this room tonight. I'd like to reach out and thank Chris. I'd like to reach out and thank Chris, and Tom, and Linda, and Barb, and Debbie, and all those that worked very hard in our campaign. All those guys, a bunch of guys here from North County Labor, they've always been very supportive of my, myself, and many members of this council. And they participate in elections, and they get the vote out. As a veteran, it's very disturbing to me when we have low voter turnouts, because some of my comrades didn't come back. And, you know, that way of life, to elect the leaders of our republic, it's a great privilege, and I really admire the labor community for getting the vote out, and all the people that helped in this past election. Congratulations to all the council members that were elected, and to Judge Boyle, you're all doing a fantastic job. Now, if you looked at the Saint Louis Post Dispatch today, you saw bad news, bad news, bad news, and bad news. Now, disaster happened in Nepal, and it would be, it's such a tragedy. Remember when we had the tornado here, and we have other catastrophes in Missouri? This earthquake must have been absolutely devastating. It was very high on the Richter scale. But I'd like to just point out that the Rotary Club has an affiliation with an outfit called Shelter Box, and they are collecting donations to help with the relief effort in Nepal. The reason they, there's probably many other great organizations that are collecting. This one I know of, I got this communication from Keith Took, who's the president of the Florissant Rotary, and this came from Rotary District Governor Jill Walker, that the Rotary is recognizing Shelter Box. And so you could go to www.shelterboxusa.org to make donations to help the poor people in Nepal who suffered a devastating earthquake. Of course, the other, two other news items that were devastating was the Achilles injury to Adam Wainwright, and the loss in the playoffs of the Saint Louis Blues. But the fourth thing that I wanted to mention is the sales tax distribution bill, Senate Bill two-twenty-one, is very hostile to the city of Florissant. We're one of the biggest losers behind Saint Louis County. We stand to lose one-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand plus every year in the lost column. University City and Wildwood are not far behind, followed by Webster Groves. All of our neighbors in our immediate area are substantial losers, including Hazelwood, Blackjack, Delwood, and Balfont Neighbors. The biggest winners, Fenton and Chesterfield, with Chesterfield Mayor Bob Nation leading the charge despite repeated objections from almost all members of Saint Louis County Municipal League, except for Chesterfield and Fenton. We are surprised by the position of Saint Louis County, who will lose eight-hundred-and-eleven thousand. They said they were swayed by an opportunity to pass a half-cent sales tax for public safety that was attached, but that opportunity is totally separate matter, we feel, and we're working to get that attached to another bill. I hope that the county will rejoin the majority of municipalities in the county and help us fight this terrible idea. I traveled to Jeff City last month to testify with Webster Groves and Wildwood against this owners movement initiated by Chesterfield. Chesterfield appears to be a greedy city that benefits from, they benefited from working with the established framework to build a levee, and now their city in a floodplain is having some commercial success, so they want everything for themselves. Our lobbyist and former State Senator Tim Green is working hard to stop this legislation even as I speak tonight. I understand that our Senators Gina Walsh and Maria Chappelle-Nedal are also working for us to stop this legislation, which is unfair to Florissant, unfair to Hazelwood, unfair to Blackjack, and unfair to the majority of the residents of Saint Louis County. Now, calm down. We had a great Aging My Way Resource Fair last week. It was a tremendous success. I'd like to commend Peggy Hogan and the senior commission for coming up with this idea. It was a huge success, a great turnout. I know several council members made it up. Mr. Jones was, I just missed you. I believe Ms. Pagano was up there. But I'd just like to say that these are the kind of examples of the progressive things that Florissant does, and there's no end to the amount of things that we'll do for our seniors. Makes Florissant one of the best places to retire, if not the best place to retire in the nation. Plus, it's a beautiful city, right, Mr. Egan? Greater North County Chamber had a ribbon-cutting for New Business Blue Star Construction in Ward Three. And guess who's coming back to town this week? The most famous person in town this week is going to be not the mayor of Florissant. Nino the Clown's coming back with circus, with circus from Italian circus, what's the name of that circus again, guys? Zoop Family Circus. Zoop Family Italian Circus. If you didn't see the Zoop Family, Zoop Family Italian Circus last year, you need to come. We're going to have an extra performance this year. We're going to have a performance, two performances on Friday, four and seven, and three performances on Saturday. So be sure and get out there and get in there. Now, if you get left out, then they're going to give you a line ticket for the next performance, which is going to be well-received. Valley of Flowers this week, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday is the granddaddy of community events. Be sure and invite your friends from outside of Florissant, and we're going to enjoy this again. This is going to be the best ever, and so we'll see you at Valley Flowers.
Thank you, Your Honor. The next meeting of the Florissant City Council will be May eleventh, twenty fifteen, at seven-thirty PM. Mr. Schmidt motions to adjourn this meeting, seconded by Mr. Shildroth. All in favor? Aye. The council will stand in recess.